Good evening. This is a joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and the Park Commission, January 4th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. In accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, relating to the 2020 COVID-19 outbreak emergency, the January 4th, 2021, public hearing of the Board of Selectmen and the Park Commission shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to review this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv backslash. So this meeting is being recorded by LakeCam, and the chat feature on Facebook will be available. Greg or Kevin, is that all set?
Yep, we'll be watching the chat.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so call to order the--
Join the meeting.
Oh, Paula. Okay, a call to meeting to the Board of Selectmen. My name is Rich L. Cameron, I'm the Chairman of the Board. Leah Fabian.
President.
Brian Day.
Here.
I guess that's Paula. So Mike, you want to call the Park Commission to order, please? You're on mute, Mike.
I don't have that whole spiel that you just read, but--
No, you don't have to read it. I read it for both of us. You're all set. Just say I'm the Chairman, and then introduce the other members that are here.
Okay, Mike Nolan, Vice Chairman of the Park Commission, calling to order the meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Joe Kosha, President.
Here.
Okay. Jesse Madford.
Here.
Paul Hool.
Here, telephone.
Gotcha. And Scott Holmes is not here.
Okay. All right, first thing on the agenda was, the second thing on the agenda was to meet with the Park Commission and discuss the following: Loon Pond Lodge rental of the building, rental caterers agreements, contracts, event manager, and maintenance. Okay. So the first thing we need to talk about is, as you know, as you know, we we had an event manager, management contract that just expired, you know, about a week, a week ago, last week. And a couple of things having to do with the contract that we need to discuss, and the Board, the Park Commission needs to decide what they want to do. And I guess we were kind of surprised that we got eight months of their monthly fee, you know, all at once. And I thought that there was discussion that some of them were not going to be charged for us. But anyways, so, just so the Park Commission knows that we were charged for May and June, which is from a prior fiscal year, which presents a problem for us. The Park Commission did encumber one month, but the month of June is not encumbered, which means that has to be put on a special time meeting now in the spring. It's unfortunate, we didn't know about it. We just had a special time meeting in December. Looks like Scott Holmes, the Park Commission Chairman, has just showed up, and it looks like he's at the beach, so I don't know.
Yes. I wish.
So anyway, so that amount is $6,800, and then the July through December, at $3,400 times six months is $20,400. So the total billing that was owed is $27,200. So the question becomes, are we going to enforce the conditions of the contract? And let me explain what those conditions are. First of all, there is a 20% bonus if above the amount, above $160,000. If they exceed that amount, they're entitled to a 20%, 20% bonus. So in year one, the revenue numbers were $165,287, so they exceeded it. So we owe them $1,060. On the reverse end, year two was $157,787, and year three was $14,326. So based upon that year, they're supposed to give us a rebate of 20% of the total year's fee, and that means their fee was $40,800, and 20%, they owe us $8,160. So between the two, according to the contract, we need to reduce their fee by $7,100. So is everybody, is the Park Commission okay in doing that?
Mr. Chair, can we just have the figures again? So the figures for year one?
Okay, year one--
Yep.
They did $165,297.
Yep.
Year two, they did $157,787.
Yep.
And year three, they did $14,326.
Okay, so year one, they met and surpassed the goal. So they just, they are due a $1,060 credit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And year three, they didn't meet that goal. So they owe us 20% of $40,800, which is their fee, which is $8,160.
Year three being calendar year 2020?
Yes, that's what the contract, you know, says.
Okay. And year-- Year two is a, is just not-- Year two at $157,787 is not a gain or a loss, it's just that was the goal?
The goal is $160,000 a year.
All right.
These are his numbers that were presented to us, so--
Yep, okay.
I believe it has a low end, too, if it goes below 140, right?
Yeah, which was year three, Mike.
That's when it kicks in.
$14,300, they only did $14,326 from November 1st, 2019, to November 30th, I'm sorry, October 31st, 2020.
Okay.
The town accountant needs to know whether the Park Commission wants to pay the total amount or wants to reduce the fee. And then there's another thing we need to talk about as well. So what does the Park Commission want to do?
My two cents would be, the contract is the contract. And if that's, that is in fact what it says, then that's what we should do. I don't know. I'd agree with you, Mike. Unless someone has some other compelling argument, I'd say contract is contract, and we'll go from there.
Okay, do you want to make, want me to continue on with the other discussion? Before you make a final decision? Because there is, there is one other piece to the contract, okay? And this is probably debatable. So according to the contract, the town is supposed to receive 20% of all the catering revenue that was generated. And that catering revenue that was generated for three years was $360,000. So $360,000 times 20%, according to the contract, they're supposed to pay the town, I'm sorry, was it 70, 70, 70, $71,449? They've only been paying us 18%. So 18% is $64,249. So if you go by the contract, we're entitled to another $8,000-- What was my number there? So the question again is that the contract says 20%, they've only paid us 18%. So the net effect is that, you know, they owe us, they owe a credit to us, a total credit to us of $13,300. So I don't know what the Commission wants to do. Do they want to enforce the 20% reduction in the fee? And do they want to charge back the difference between the 18% versus the 20%? So those are the numbers.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I, I don't know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I was told that they were paying the 20% when, when it was discovered. I don't know how much that entails, or--
I have, I have all of the, their sheets. I've had, I have all the receipts that they, they sent in, which was on a monthly basis, and they say 18%.
Okay.
Looks like Nellie's got a question.
I do. Well, more of a statement. And speaking with SEM about that, they did verbally inform the caterers of the 20%. They did not have a contract to provide them to put the increase in there. And unfortunately, their reporting to us states the 18 versus the 20. But when they went back and asked the caterer, "How much are you paying us?", the caterer said, "You told us 20. We've, we've been doing 20%."
Well, the documentation doesn't show that. Not, not one of the documentation. There's no, there's no receipts from the caterers. They just provided a summary sheet for each event, and each event says 18%, not 20%. So if they want to provide us with the caterers' bills, so we can reconcile it back, we're glad they do that. But based upon the documentation that they provided us, you know, they never provided any documentation from the caterers at all. Just the total amount that we were entitled, supposedly entitled to, which was 18%.
May I ask a question, Rich?
Sure.
When you calculated that, were you looking at all of the fees or just the food services?
According to the spreadsheets that were given to us, they're entitled to all of the fees. Were you talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about the yearly thing?
Yeah, I'm just looking at here and--
I believe the bar service has been paying 20 from the get-go.
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's not a problem.
Okay.
So that includes all the fees, Mike, except for the cleaning service, and the cleaning service is backed out.
So I, an extra 2% on what I'm looking at here for the food services that we collected, if you add 2% to it, it's $1,580, so I'm not--
No, it's actually, it's actually 2% on the total amount, which is $360,000. Not on the 2% that they paid us.
It's not on the lodge rental, it's just on the catering service?
Correct, right. The catering service revenue was $360,000 for the three years. According to their numbers, that's what they gave us. So I mean, if they could provide the documentation from the caterers to say that we got 20%, but I don't see it. I got nothing. And there's two sets, there's two sets of packages that they, they have provided. One is a spreadsheet, which, you know, I'm sure you guys have seen. And then the other was the individual sheets that show everything for that particular event.
So one of that, you took the, the caterers' fees, that number, that was the number you were using, right?
Correct, right.
Because I had, I had figured this out for the former administrator, and we went by what we had received, which was supposed to be 20%, but we were, we're assuming that this is 18%.
The monies that we received, according to the spreadsheets that have been provided--
Yeah.
$64,249.
Right.
If we went by, if we went by the contract, we would have gotten $71,449.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Sure.
So these are some of the reasons why I didn't want to re-sign for another three years. Because I really feel like we need to, on our part, I'm not saying anything with SEM, but I'm saying on our part, we need to sort of, you know, figure out our own kind of bookkeeping, try to get all the caterers and everybody, or whatever, on the same page. In all honesty, I, I did hear it, the same time, you know, Nellie did and Scott did, that, you know, the caterers were paying the full 20%. I, Mr. Chair, I have no idea, you know, how, who has what. I mean, I'm, I would, I hate to throw money away, but I would rather not get into big debate over the 2%. But I do agree, too, it would be my suggestion that we stick to the contract on, you know, the on the performance stuff. And, you know, just in, in full disclosure, when we talked about extending the contract, the contractor, you know, wanted to adhere to the three years and cited sticking with the contract. And, you know, I, I said, "Well, if we're, we're gonna, we can't claim there's a pandemic for one thing and not for the other." So we either stick to the contract or not. I don't want to see us jumping around on, you know. Now that being said, I just said I'm okay without, you know, fighting over the 2%. But I, I think we have to end this, and I think we need to, and the contractor, too, should know what they're, you know, what they're looking at also. So I, I, I hate throwing money away, but I, I think trying to prove the 2%, whether we got it or not, is an exercise in futility. Thank you.
Well, I guess just one other thing to mention about that, you know, I'm not saying they did nothing for eight months. But, you know, they didn't do a lot for eight months. And so there was some discussion, not with me, you know, about maybe forgiving some of the months or reducing the fee, the monthly fee, that would be more acceptable, you know, to the town. But they decided that they wanted to charge the full fee, which they did, and they sent the invoices. It's kind of disappointing that they sent eight months all at once. I mean, they should have sent it at a monthly at a time, but that's beside the point. But once again, this is up to the Park Commission, and the Park Commission can decide to charge the 20% reduction, which I believe is, is $8,160. And also, we gave them a credit of $1,060, so that net is $7,100 to be reduced from the overall billing of $27,200. And then the Park Commission can decide whether they want to charge the 18% versus the 20%. The town accountant would like a vote from the Park Commission, so he can have it on record, because the auditors will be looking at this, and he wants to make sure that you're in agreement as to what you want to do. So it's your decision what you want to do.
If I can make a quick statement here. I was first thinking, why would we hold them to year three when they essentially couldn't hold events? But to hear that they were continuing to charge the management fee when essentially there was nothing that they could do, that's a little disheartening. I mean, in some ways, that's almost them admitting that they would have been able to hold events and manage them when they couldn't. So I mean, I would kind of, you know, obviously defer to the parks, but going between the 18 and 20, that should be a simple math equation. If they can provide the evidence and show that they were paying it, then great, that's solved. If not, it sounds like road money. But if they were continuing to pay, charge the fee, then they didn't hit their year three goal.
I mean, I, you know, I, I know that they were still picking up the phone, but I'm sure the phone wasn't ringing like, you know, I, like it normally would. And when we do look at the calendar, I know a lot of what they did initially was bump people out who had already booked. So I can't, I mean, I don't think any of us can really attest to how much work or not was done. But, you know, the, the contractor definitely said, you know, he would, wanted to stick to the contract and only go with a three-year extension. And didn't want to go with a one-year. So I feel like we either have to make accommodations for the pandemic or not. And again, all that being said, I think looking for the 2%, looking to prove the 2% one way or the other is probably just going to be more grief than anything. So if we're going to stick to to the contract, then that means we would reduce it. Because yes, Brian, they did submit all those bills, so-- Anyone?
Do any Parks members have any comments?
Yeah, I have comments. First of all, I would, I would point out that they did do work. They didn't host any events, but they were on the phone, they were answering emails, and they did show the, the venue to potential users. Not, obviously not what, the amount of work that they had normally done, but I'm not sure if that's up to us to determine whether we should not pay what was agreed to in the contract. As far as the 2%, Rich, I'm still not really catching on. I don't have those, those figures that you have. As I said, I had, I had done it a while ago, at least eight or 10 months ago, and I came up with somewhere around $2,000 to $3,000 that they were short on the 2%. So I, I, we're not, you know, I'm not seeing the same thing you're seeing. So I would say, my opinion would be, if you feel that that is what the real number is, then ask them for proof, and they should be able to provide that. That would be my, my input.
That's up to you guys. You guys can decide what you want to do.
Yeah, just my two cents worth, again. It's disheartening, I think, that the contractor did not say, "Hey, I didn't do $3,400 worth every month." Didn't do it. They did something, picked up a phone, whatever, and I don't want to downplay what they did, but it certainly wasn't the same they would have done if the place was up and running. So they should have, should have reduced that a little bit. So I'm, I'm just trying to hear that. So with that said, I think you have to go after the 2%. They get to prove to us that it was indeed. Show us the receipts. And if it, if we can't prove it, then you owe us the money, the 2% difference. If it's, if you want to play it out, I think that's what we have to play it. It's my opinion.
I'm agreeing with that. I think if, if we owe them money, we should get everything that we were entitled to, to reduce that amount as much as possible.
Paula, do you have any comment?
She's on mute.
Paula, take it off mute, please.
If she's muted through Zoom, I don't know if she can. She dialed in. Somebody else mute her. I don't know if Craig or Kevin can unmute her.
We can only ask her to unmute. We can't unmute her.
Paula, can you unmute?
What's the key sequence for a dialed-in user?
I don't know.
Okay. Better move on, I guess.
Yep.
So, go ahead.
No, I, I, I just feel the same with Mike, that the number of 360 just seems real high, Rich. I'm not doubting you, but I, I mean, when we only bring in less than 100 per year--
No, the 3, the 360 is the gross revenue from the caterers. We get 20% of the gross revenue. So that would be the $72,429, and we got paid $64,249. And don't forget, that's over three years.
Right. Well, two, two and a half, right? Two plus?
Three, whatever it is, the three years of the contracts.
Right, but the, the third year was very small.
Correct, yep.
It, it just seemed, 360 just seems really high to me. I, I, in good conscience, couldn't vote on that, not knowing that that number is correct. I don't have the numbers in front of me. I don't have last year's budget, last year's or the year before's numbers, so I can't. That's, that's me personally. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. Does anybody else have any more comments? Parks Commission? Mike?
I muted it again. I'm just looking at what was, it says was collected here, Rich. We got, collected the first year, it's $32,877. Trying to do this quick. Second year, we collected $27,738. And third year, we collected $18,000, whoops, 684, according to this spreadsheet. That's $79,000.
I don't, I don't know what spreadsheet you--
So where did you get that 64, yeah, I was not where you got to see it with the 64,000. I'm just going by what was sent out to us, the spreadsheet that was sent out to us today.
Well, and--
Maybe we could ask them to--
There's multiple spreadsheets floating around then, because I'm using the ones that actually show, and this was, you know, put together by them, that shows each year broken out. So if these numbers are wrong, I don't know. That's the problem, you know? I mean, the problem is that there was no consistency as far as reporting is concerned and providing documentation.
Well, that was one of the things that we definitely decided needed to be addressed with this next new contract, whether it would be them or, or another contractor.
Right, but we have a problem right now, okay? And the problem is, do you want to pay the bills as they are, or do you want to deduct the fees and the additional 2% added, or not? Because the town accountant needs to know, because he needs to have it documented. Says the Park Commission does not want to reduce their fees. That's, that's right now. So if you want to say, "Okay, we'll abide by the contract and do the reduction fee of the $8,160," Of the eighty one sixty, because they didn't meet their numbers. Okay, that's one piece. And then the second piece is if you disagree with the other one, and it needs to be verified. Then make a motion to say that we'll accept the reduction of the um fees based upon the contract. And we'll investigate and have um SEM provide documentation. That shows that we, that they paid the twenty percent, which I don't think they did, but. If that's what you want to do, we'll do that. Or you can decide, I don't want to investigate that additional two percent at all. So if you just want to do the reduction of the eighty one sixty. Then we'll, you can do that and then say, I don't want to do the other thing. That's entirely up to you. Just need to make a decision here, that's all.
Well, Scott, is it okay if I go ahead and ma- make a motion then?
Yep.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we do split it out into two separate issues. The first of which is the contract with the twenty percent reduction, uh, and we do enforce that.
So it would be a net of twenty thousand one hundred dollars?
I I don't know. What was it? Eighty one thousand, eighty one hundred, eighty one hundred dollars it was?
Their reduction is uh, seventy one hundred dollar reduction, Scott.
Yep.
Because we owe them a credit.
Right.
Because they made their number in the first year of the thousand sixty. So the last year, they uh, they didn't make the number, so they owe us eighty one hundred and sixty dollars, and we owe them. A thousand sixty dollars.
Correct.
Net subtracting from the invoices is seventy one hundred dollars.
Right, and the invoices, you said, were twenty seven two hundred?
Correct.
So the net would be twenty thousand one hundred?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to verify the number, that's all.
Yep.
So that's, so that's Mike's, Mike's, that's your, that's your motion?
That's the first part. Yeah, that's the first motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Who was that, a second?
Joe Kasha.
Joe Kasha? Do we have any further discussion? Mike Nolan?
No, I'm good.
Joe Kasha?
Nope.
Jesse Medford?
No.
Paula Hool, are you with us?
She might need to try pressing star six to unmute in the Zoom meeting.
Paula, did you hear that?
If that doesn't work, she can try pressing her mute button on her phone.
Did you hear that, Paula? Okay, we're gonna move forward. Um. Seeing there's no further discussion, we'll be taking a vote. Um, on the, on the motion made by Mike to um, reduce what we would owe them down to twenty thousand one hundred. Which is a reduction from the twenty seven thousand, two hundred dollars, minus the credits of seventy one hundred. Uh, Mike Nolan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe Kasha?
Aye.
Jesse Medford?
Aye.
Paula, are you there? Scott Holmes, aye.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to say, make a second ma- uh, uh, motion um, to the effect of the two percent. And um. Once again, um, go ahead and uh, try credit that, take that off of what we owe them. Um, pending a review and proof from them that 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 was. Uh, in fact, being paid twenty percent. As as Rich said, they should have that information at hand.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Is there any further discussion? Mike Nolan? Jesse Medford?
Well, I, I'm actually, yeah, um, Richard, what was that number again? The two percent that you had?
Um, seventy two hundred dollars.
Seventy two hundred dollars, okay. That was, um, we, we collected sixty four hundred and sixty four thousand and they, they should owe. Seventy, seventy four hundred?
Number seven, yeah, sixty four thousand, uh, two forty nine, and then they owe us seventy two hundred.
Okay. Well, that would be additional twen- uh, seventy two hundred dollars.
Correct.
Okay, uh, Jesse, do you have any comment?
No comment.
Joe Kasha, any comment?
Nope, no more comments.
Paula, are you here? Okay, unfortunately, we'll vote. Um, Mike Nolan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Joe Kasha, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jesse Medford, how do you vote?
Aye.
Scott Holmes votes nay.
Okay.
Three to one, ca- carries.
All right, so um, I will get the uh, town accountant to uh, send out a letter. Uh, to them summarizing this, you know, of where we are and to ask them to provide the documentation. Uh, for the uh, two percent.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we wanted to talk about the uh, as uh. Has been requested uh, by the uh, park commission that um, to send out an invitation. To quote for event, uh, event management, uh, Loom Pond Lodge, and that did go out on um, December twenty ninth. And um. I know of at least two companies that um, are interested in responding. And so um. Um, and they're very good. They're very good companies. Uh, they're very well known. And they are, they are interested in responding and and taking it over. So um, and their due back. On. I think it's the eighteenth. So I mentioned, um. I mentioned that um. That they may, they may, they would have the opportunity to uh, visit the site on uh. This Friday, January eighth at uh, ten o'clock, so. Nobody may come, I don't know, but uh, that is the opportunity to do that, and I believe that uh. Mike has volunteered to uh, to be there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there too, Mr. Chair.
Uh, and the responses are due back on um, January eighteenth. Okay?
I I just had a question.
Yep.
Um, I I I thought that the uh, the liquor contract was gonna go hand in hand with this.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Not going with, not going with it at all. In fact, we're gonna talk about why we're not gonna do a bar, bar contract going forward. So this does not go hand in hand. This is only for the event management, period.
Okay.
So, you know, a company that wants to run it, and then a company can be a caterer, a company can be a caterer and provide liquor. Um, but we're not going to send out an individual uh, bartending agreement to. With this, it didn't go out, you know, as a matter of fact. But I sent this to you guys. Couple of weeks ago, I assume you had a chance to review it. You didn't have any question. I didn't get any questions, so.
Um, I just received this uh, over the weekend, but um. I think when we talked earlier, we.
Wait a minute, Mike, he he's saying you just gotta, I'm I'm not trying to say you're wrong.
I had plenty of time to review it and.
No, but it was, it was supposed to have been done. Um, the week before the twenty eighth, because that's when the um, we we asked for any comments before that. But anyways, go ahead.
I didn't, I I I don't know. I just got it. Anyway, um, I have a couple of questions. Um. One of the things that we had talked about um, was the fact that who would, wants to do just the man- management without.
We lost you, Mike.
Having the liquor. Um, the liquor contract is. Okay, you can't hear me?
I can hear you now.
Can hear you, yep.
Okay, you you went out a little bit.
Okay. Uh. Um, one of the things we talked about was um, the liquor, you know, having the liquor included. I I'd like to know why you you folks decided to.
I I, I never said, I I personally never said that the liquor contract was gonna go with the event management agreement.
I'm talking about the park commission. We, we, we thought that it would be the best that it all goes. One, isn't, I mean, it's pretty much understood that um, the the lion's share of the profit on these things is through the liquor. So I'm just not sure exactly how you propose to to work that with a separate liquor license. Maybe um. If you could explain what your plan is for that. Um, is the town gonna hold the liquor license?
Well, first of all. As was discussed, that this agreement. And you know that this agreement is probably gonna come back with a similar price tag that you've already been paying on. Okay? Nothing to do with the liquor, the the bar license. This has to do with who's gonna be the event manager for the Loom Pond Lodge. Now, I think, and the two people that are interested in responding to this. Have said, you know, um, why do we need to do this? Okay? Why do you need to have an event manager if you, if you give me? The responsibility of doing the catering business and the bar business. We don't need this. We'll take it all, be responsible. That's two out of three that have said that to me. So, there's a different approach that could be taken here. Where we say, okay, you're gonna become the preferred vendor for the facility. Which includes both food and uh, bar service and doing all the event management part of it.
Okay, so now I'm really confused because I thought you just, you just said it. It doesn't include the bar management.
No, it does not. It's it's separate right now. It only includes the management of the facility itself to to manage. It's schedule the events, to monitor the events, to manage the events with the weddings or whatever it happens to be. It does not include the bar service.
Or the catering?
Or the catering. It, the only, the, the event management before, you know, did not include the bar service. That was a separate contract. For the bar service.
Correct, but they got all, they were the only bar service.
Yeah, but maybe other people could bid on it too. Right?
But but how are they gonna bid on it? I mean, we're, we've put in, i- it's a twenty percent, uh, uh, that's another question, but. Um, but also, I I just need to bring to light that we have thirty six contracts. Um, for events, and if you look at that contract, that contract states that professional bartending service is the bartender.
No longer.
It's in the contract.
No longer is he the bar. He does not have a license from the town anymore, as of December thirty first. Period.
Okay, so how are you gonna handle it?
He doesn't have a contract with us. It expired on December thirty first.
How are we proposing to handle it, Rich? Um, each, each caterer that comes in there is gonna bring their own bar service?
It depends upon how it gets structured. Because you've got companies that do both together. They do the catering and they do the bar service, you know, together.
Right.
The problem that we've been running into here is that. Between the event management company, you know, the bartending service and the caterers and all this stuff, I mean. Wouldn't it make sense to deal with just one person? One company that could do it all? As a matter of fact, you know, the, the um, the catering contracts. You know, you, on the website, it says the preferred catering contracts. We only have two that were signed.
Well, that's a separate issue. Um, I'm I'm still not following, so please um, excuse my ignorance here. But um. If you, are we talking about sending out a separate RFQ?
You asked me, Mike.
Catering and bar? Well, it's in the events, and you have people interested in doing that. What, what about the caterer and the bar?
Yeah, we may have to send an RFP to do that together.
So it's a separate RFP, okay. All right, and that's gonna be both together, catering and bar?
Together. I don't, I don't want to get us into, once again, separate contracts for multiple companies. We don't need three companies involved. In in doing an event, you know, that we have to manage those contracts. It's been driving us all crazy.
I agree one hundred percent. Um, but I'm not sure what we're asking for here in this particular um, RFQ. Um, I believe you're looking for just someone to do the management, to do the booking of the events. And that's it?
That's what you asked me to send out. That's what I did.
Yes.
No, no.
Yeah, well, we decided that we were gonna send it out just for the event management, even if that means that. The Board of Selectmen have to approve like individual liquor licenses for, like we used to. In hopes that we get a couple of preferred contract con- you know, um, either caterers or bartending services, so. But at least the event management company will just be doing all the event stuff. So that's what we sent out was for the event management for the, the property.
And you said you didn't want to hire.
So how does that make it all one? I'm sorry?
You said you didn't want to hire a person to do this, right? Bar commission didn't want anything to do with that.
Hiring just an individual to work for the town.
Work for the town.
I think we all.
We tried that, it didn't work out.
Okay, so. That's not what you wanted, so that's, this is why you, you got this.
So you're gonna, you're gonna have multiple contracts then? You you just said that you didn't want to have, you wanted to have one company doing the whole.
We could have multiple contracts.
Which is absolute nonsense.
We could also negotiate with somebody to to do both the catering and the uh, the bartending service from one company. Okay, not multiple companies.
Without doing the management.
Right. We could. And then it's, say, okay, we'll take it all, and we won't charge you for the event management. It will do it, you know, ourselves.
Is the thought that there would no longer be, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm just gonna ask, is the thought that there would no longer be a choice for the um. So the folks who, having events, they're getting married and such, that they would no longer have a list of six or seven caterers to choose from. There would just be. The event caterer, and that would be that.
Okay, that's not what we talked about, and that's not what we agreed to.
Okay.
Thirty six events.
Then fine, okay. The, the problems that we've experienced is, we just talked about the caterers' contracts and stuff. And we had problems with SSB, that we don't even have any information about what the caterers charged. At all. We have no documentation. So you just asked us to get that from them. There isn't any, okay? So how do we, how do we even know that it was being calculated correctly? We didn't.
Rich, we all agree that this new, uh, whoever gets this new contract, it, we're gonna make changes to it to get. More communication and more. Detail. That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking why? Why do we need an event management company? If you're gonna hire a. A caterer and, why, I thought you just said it. You said, why would we have more than one con- contract? You just have one contract for everybody.
But, you know, Brian just said, well, we're gonna have six, six or seven preferred vendors. If that's what you guys want, you got a completely different animal, and we're going back to where we were. If that's what you want. It is, ought to be firms, companies that can provide. The menus that are required for these, instead of picking and choosing, you know, multiple. As, and as a matter of fact, the contracts, the two contracts that I have. That were for the caterers, don't even have dates on them, don't even have end dates on them, when they expire.
Once again, we're reviewing stuff that already happened, and I I'm trying to figure out what you, what your plan is to go forward here.
Well, no, you you guys, you guys tell me what you want the plan to be.
Mr. Chair, may I? The first thing we need to do before we hire any bartender anywhere or caterer is find an event contractor, someone to handle the events. If we can't find that, then it doesn't really matter because then we're gonna have to hire someone to do that work. So the second step relies on the first step. If in the first step, a couple of these companies say they can provide everything, then that makes it easier for us. But, you know, if we don't even get anyone who wants to do the event management, then we need to shift gears and say, okay, now we need to hire a person who's gonna do it the old way. So it's like step two totally depends on step one here. So we need to find out whether we're going to get a company, and if we do get a company, what can they provide for us? So it's kind of a two-part process here. If no one bids on it to do just the event management, then we have to hire a person to be an events coordinator that works for the town of Lakeville.
So just a quick question, if, of the, of the bids we sent out or the people who were interested, are they capable of doing all three, do we think?
They are. Very capable.
So, you know, so we might be heading down the path that whoever, if someone, however many people, however many companies, whatever it is, they might say, you know, I can do all three, and we might agree, yes, all three it is. But if I have a wedding there, I gotta go to that restaurant or that, who are those people are, that food service only, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Unless you guys want preferred vendors, and then you're gonna open up a whole different thing now.
Yeah, then we can do preferred vendors, but in this case, we have to do preferred vendors that have contracts and, you know, everything else. Because this was kind of the situation where, you know, we were getting a lot of the information through the management company. But, I mean, we have to have a little more documentation on everything.
If I could make a comment, I think for that size facility, it's very normal to have a list of preferred vendors in the area because parties might have a certain menu, you know, flavor in mind, maybe they want seafood, maybe they want Italian, whatever it might be. It seems like a lot of the problems we've had in the past were more on the execution and the bookkeeping, not necessarily the principle of how it was supposed to run. Been a lot of hours spent on looking at these contracts and trying to figure out, you know, now that we have hindsight, what could we have done? But focus on that personally. I, I, I'm not sure who to ask, maybe Nellie knows, but I have to assume a lot of the events that have already been scheduled. Hopefully they can all be held due to what's going on in the world, but they've probably already picked out a lot of these restaurants that were preferred vendors. And if we go and yank them, I'm not sure if they'll wanna keep their event or not.
I don't think you yank the ones that are already booked.
Then we'd have to go get contracts with them anyway.
But a lot of them haven't selected anyone yet. They just have the date reserved, so. I mean, we have to start somewhere. We can't say, oh, we want a bartender to do the event management. I mean, that was, you know, we, we tried that. And that's not even how that started. That sort of evolved that way. So I would feel better if we have someone under contract to do the event management first. I just wanna be sure we're gonna find someone, because if not, then we're gonna have to hire someone to do the actual job of being an event coordinator.
I know I'm taking up a lot of your time, but I have a couple of questions.
Take as much time as you want. We gotta resolve those things. They've been going on for a year.
Sorry, sorry that it's taken so long. First of all, could you send us a list of where you send the invitations to, so we know who the vendors were? I don't expect you to divulge it out here in, in public, but we didn't show who you sent it to.
Okay.
Secondly, I think you just answered my other question was, what do we do with all the existing contracts? There, I've already had a couple of phone calls from people that have weddings booked, and they saw that, they got the letter from SEM saying that they were changing the management company, and wanted to know if there was, they're still gonna have their band and their caterer that they chose. So you're saying that whoever gets this second contract will have to agree to that?
First of all, any contract with the wedding is with the caterers, not with the town.
What is that?
They, they sign up, they sign the agreement with the caterer, not with the town. We don't have anything to do with that at all. They manage the caterer. And as far as the band is concerned, they do the same thing, so if they have.
My, my question is if someone had a caterer in mind and they signed a contract with them, are we going to honor that?
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, because it's, they've already made their selection.
Okay, and then my third thing to, to respond to Brian. One of, I just wanted to point out, one of the, the great selling points for this place has been the fact that we offer several different vendors. And we're open to new vendors all the time. We've had, we had a company come along a couple of years ago that did lobster bakes and pig roasts. We had another party that wanted food trucks, so we've contracted, we have, we have agreements with those type of caterers as well. I think it's a, personally, I think it's a great selling point to offer that. And if we take that away, you know, I, I, I'm not sure that would, would get as many people interested.
But if the, the restaurants that can provide those exact same services, probably except for the pig roast, why would there be any objection to that?
I don't know that there would be. I'm just stating my opinion.
Okay.
When is the second, this other RFQ gonna be going out for the caterer and bar?
We're not gonna do anything until we get this back, till we know what we're doing.
Till we see who responds.
Okay, so it'll be back on the 18th, and then the, the bar, the, we could decide, you know, what we wanna do and take the next step. But if you wanna go to seven or eight different caterers and bartending services or whatever, you got a big problem, you know, the contracts and everything to get done, so. Somebody else can take it over, because I've done way too much work on this already. Sorry.
You don't have to be sorry, I'm just asking questions.
Well, I'm just telling you my, my feeling, and you know, it's not like we haven't talked about this multiple.
We had a discussion.
Pardon me?
Well, I also.
Yeah, that's, I know we have.
I also just wanna see what happens on the 18th. And we'll see what, you know, what is, if anyone bids on it. And if not, then we have to change our direction really quickly to hire someone, so, you know.
Well, I would, I would say that this whole thing is kind of throwing me off, because it feels to me like it's backwards. It seems to me that you would wanna get your, your caterer and bar service in there. And they're gonna, that's, that's the one who's gonna make the money. Anybody that's doing the management company, if they're only making $3,000 a month, I don't think, if that's all they're doing, I don't think you're gonna get anybody that's gonna bid anywhere near that price.
It's gonna be higher. There's no question it's gonna be higher.
Right.
I tend to agree with you, Mike. Regardless of a management company or if the town hires somebody, we gotta have caterers and a bar service ready to go. So I, I don't know why we wouldn't at least consider doing these in parallel.
Well, I mean, I don't, I think it's, we know who, who is a regular. I think those are a little more easy to find. Right now, though, you know, if, I thought my phone number was going on the email that, you know, the previous company set out, and I haven't gotten any phone calls asking about events or, you know, anything. So I'm not sure if Nellie's gotten any calls through the, the town line. But right now, what is, why do we even need caterers and bartenders if we don't have anyone to manage the events? So, you know, you can look at it both ways, but I think we need to find someone to figure out who's gonna be doing the legwork and making sure, you know, because if not, it's gonna be, you know, Nellie and I offered Nellie. I actually got a volunteer, someone saw one of our meetings and volunteered. So I do have a volunteer who has stepped up to help out with event management if we need that. So we need to know whether we're going to have to hire someone or the other companies. I mean, there's plenty of the actual caterers that have been doing events there, the bartender service. I'm sure we can, we have those names are a little bit, that to me is the easiest part of the puzzle to put together. Finding someone to manage it is a little more difficult.
I disagree. I think that if you get a bartending service and caterer in there, if they're gonna get that part of the, the business, they're gonna probably bid a lot lower on the management fee. Just knowing, I mean, that's why we got the price we did from SEM, because they had the bar service.
That doesn't make it right, Mike.
What do you mean it doesn't make it right?
Because, you know, the event management company was not there managing every single event. They had a bartender there, you know, so they weren't there during each event, and we know that for a fact.
Okay, Rich, again, we're talking about what's already happened.
I know, but you know, you, you're marrying the two together when that's not, that's not what you should want. You want somebody to be there during the events, to coordinate the events, make sure everything's in place, make sure it's set up and so forth. That's the objective of the event management. Now, if a company was going to take it over and run the, the catering service in the bar service, they would do all of that included in their price. That's what they would do. But since you want multiple vendors, you know, preferred vendors, and maybe multiple bartending services, I don't know, you've complicated the matter. Very complicated.
I, I didn't say that we had to do that. I just said, I was trying to point out that that was a, a feature that we offered in the past. We're, we're looking for what's gonna happen in the future here. And I just don't see, I don't see how we wouldn't put the other RFQ out first. And then, and then see if you needed it.
Okay, go for it. Who wants to do it? I don't have time to do it right now. Anybody wanna do it?
Well, I thought we were working on this together.
I'm working on it together, but I'm doing all the work, okay? And, you know, I'm not going, I'm trying to get decisions here, you know, of what we wanna do. And so now we've gone back and we say, okay, we wanna have a list of preferred vendors. Every one of those preferred vendors, the event coordinator requires contract, the preferred vendors require contracts, legitimate contracts. You know, bartending services may require, you know, contracts. Who wants to do it? Because I'm not. I'm sorry. I'm tired. I got all these other problems I'm dealing with. The COVID-19 is driving us absolutely crazy right now. So I can't do it. I physically can't do it. I'm sorry. So if somebody else wants to take it on, they can go ahead and do it. I'll give you the documentation. You can do it.
Okay.
If somebody wants to do it, who wants to step up and do it? It's not gonna be me. I'll tell you right now. I got this out. We'll have an answer on the 18th. You can make a decision what you wanna do. If you wanna hire one of these firms or not, I know two firms that are gonna apply, you know, for this service, okay? But the fee, just so you know, the fees are gonna be higher than you think, for sure.
I know.
So, but that's what you want. You want an outside company to take it over, right? You don't wanna hire your own person. Don't you?
I think that was a mutual decision that.
Okay, but I'm just saying, Leah.
Yeah, no, I know.
It was made.
Yep. I know.
All I, all I said, Rich, was that the choices should be honored for the existing contracts.
They will be. They should be.
Those will be. Those contracts are.
We have, we have contracts that are already signed that say, I'm gonna use X caterer, and we have to abide by that.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
I don't even, I don't even want to try to change that if someone has already selected their, you know, food caterer and, and everything. I, I have no interest in changing that. That's who they want.
The majority have not, just so everybody knows.
Right. I think the majority have not. And if, you know, someone wants to use, you know, the previous bartending service, then we would do a one-day liquor license for them like we would any other bartending service.
I don't think bartending service, that's important for anybody. I think it's, you know, it's a.
The caterer, right.
Caters, if they have their minds.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have people that are interested in just, just applying for this? Because I spoke to one of the local.
But they, they, they're both interested in trying to take the whole thing over too.
Right, exactly. That's what I, I, I got a phone call today saying that they wouldn't be interested unless they had the whole thing.
I don't know who that was, but they're supposed to go it'll be, but that's okay.
I don't know.
And, and I mean, let's, let's, you know, let's not forget, it's a little complicated because they all have to be licensed and.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of work to do in this.
There's a lot.
Dealing with multiple people and multiple contracts and managing it.
Right, this is very complicated.
It's a whole.
Yeah. The easiest thing for us to do would have been to hire a person, but we've had many conversations about how hiring one person, we couldn't expect that person, let's say in the month of October or the month of June, when you have multiple events on one weekend, to be there, you know, 16 hours a day, in which case, that's when it was falling back on the park commissioners to be there, to empty the trash, to lock the building, to clean the bathroom, to do this. We're trying to avoid that. By hiring a company just to do the management part, we're getting, that, the onus is on them to provide that person. So if it coincidentally ends up being someone who can also provide a catering service, then so be it, but we need to have someone in place to do that event management. I mean, I can't stress how I think that's super important. I think it's way easier to find, you know, people to do catering. And I, I mean, I know who, you know, some of the most popular caterers, they don't, they don't, they don't care who their contract is with, whether it's, you know, this bride or that bride. If they have an opportunity to sell their service, they're gonna do it. So I, I think we just need to start here.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I, I, I think we're looking at a, a couple of different points of views. And, and I'm not, I'm not doubting what Leah just said. I, I, I agree with it to, to an extent. But my extent is coming from a different angle. If you get the management service first, they're gonna charge us a lot more money, not knowing whether or not they have the bar service or the catering. Whereas if they knew that they were the caterer or the bartending service, then we might get a break on what they're gonna charge us to be the management company. And we may be able to bundle all three. I mean, years ago, when they first worked on this building and got this building together, that was a decision that that board made, rather to go with one caterer, lock, stock and barrel, or to go to the route that they went and having multiple caterers, okay? And, 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 and running it that way. We just kind of inherited that situation, and we've been trying to deal with it the best we can. Good, bad or indifferent. Some reasons it's really good, it's a great selling feature to be able to offer all these different types. But on the other hand, like you said, Rich, it is very cumbersome. You've got multiple personalities, multiple contracts, multiple people involved. Yeah, it would be a lot easier just to have one, no, no doubt about it. But I'm looking at it from the, from the point of view of, I'm trying to keep my costs down. And if we hire a management company first and their fee is double what we were paying, and then they go ahead and get the liquor contract or the catering contract, it's costing us more money. That, that's the way I'm looking at it, which is I think it's a different point of view from the way Leah's looking at it. I understand how she's looking at it and she wants to have that solidified and have that, 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 that company there. And I understand that. I'm, I'm just looking at it from a different point of view, that's all.
Well, if you want, we, I respond to the 18th, we reject them all.
I'm hoping, I'm hope that we're pleasantly surprised on the 18th. And if we're not, then we can try it another way. But I think in the meantime, you know, we need to start figuring out what's going to happen when some of these events, you know. And from my point of view as a selectman, I really don't want to just dump this on a brand new town administrator who comes in, even though I'm sure that person is going to be perfectly capable of handling it. I would just assume, you know, try to have some of this cleared up by the time we get someone in place. So we're not dumping a very complex problem on a new person. I think we all agree, none of this is, is easy, you know. We're in the municipal like entertainment business here.
If I can just give my opinion, I think, you know, I said, I think you move forward with the way we have it. Let's see what happens by the 18th. If it sounds like the ones that are interested can do all three, event management, catering and bartending, win-win for all of us. Possibly we have a discussion if one of those do get selected and get it. If a bride suddenly wants someone else's food, maybe there's a deal they can work on and still get that. I wouldn't take that off the table. So I, I don't think that's a, you know, we have to address that right now. So I'm, I'm a fan of saying, let's move forward, see what we get, have that discussion with those interested parties. If they take it all on, beautiful. It, it goes to what Scott was saying, that they may even get a deal on the overall price if they get the whole package. So it sounds like these companies have that. So I think we're in the right direction.
I mean, I'm not discounting that at all, that, you know, I don't, someone may come back and say, hey, I'll do the whole thing. You know, I just want to see what's out there. I
Yeah, I think we need, we need to. I think it's what we were talking about this for months, maybe a year. We, we want to see what's out there.
Right, especially because when this was done the last time, there was only one company that bid on it. So you know, I, to me, that is the much more stressful part. And again, once we see what we get, where we can, if we don't like it, we can reject it. I mean, we're not, we're not married to anything here. I was going to suggest that we have a meeting pretty quickly or that the park commissioners, you know, nominate two people to work on this or any way, shape or form to try to get this, you know, done. Because the bids will be in on the 18th and we'll know better what we're talking about. I, I don't know if you want to do just an informal meeting to go over it and then come to a public meeting to make the actual decisions. Or if we just want to have a meeting on the 19th and say, this is what we have, what direction are we going to go? And then we pick a new direction. Anyone?
Well, again, I, I said, my opinion is we, we move forward. I don't know if we have to take a poll, everybody, but my thing that we move forward and see what we get.
I don't think we have to poll everybody, but the 18th is a good date because we still don't have any events that are going to be disrupted in any way. And even the first couple of things that are coming up may not even be able to, you know, they're not until the end of March, which I think are rebooks from, you know, before. So I still don't think that we're going to be over a, whatever it is, 20 person. I don't think these were booked, newly booked to have, knowing you need to have a COVID guideline wedding. I think these were rebooks from before. So I, I think where this is still the right time to be investigating all the options for us. There's a whole lot more that we have to discuss. So, Mr. Chair, I, you know, I'm sorry?
I, I just wanted something to add.
Yeah, okay.
Regarding the bartending service and caterers, is that in fact, something that has to go off for an RFQ or where we've already set the, the price? Is that something we can just award to whoever we want?
I don't have a direct answer on that question. I'm having town council look at that question. You already signed, I'm not going to pick on this board, but your previous board had already signed contracts for preferred vendors. Now, whether they should have gone out to bid or not, I don't know. We have a list of six or seven of them now. We only have two contracts. In that particular case, they just signed the contract. I'm not sure that that was the right thing to do, but they did. So that has to be checked out, Mike.
Okay, so, but I'm just confused if I'm going to be meeting with folks on the night, on the 8th to show them the facility and they have questions. I'm, I guess I'm wondering if I should tell them this, this is two totally separate things, or if, if they win the management company, we can assign them as the
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I wish we could.
Plus, plus due to the procurement process, whatever you tell one person, I think you have to tell everybody. Isn't that correct, Rich? Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think the answer right now is to respond to the event management contract.
Yep. So it's like if one person shows up, we can't say, well, we could do this or we could do that or
If they win,
Right.
Then we can negotiate a contract with them, Mike, about those things.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, but doesn't it change the scope of work if they win? If we then add additional scope, that might have drawn additional bidders, how they'd be in the scope to begin with?
Yes or no? Like I said, you know, we had three different contracts here. We started with the bartending service in 2014. And then in 2017, we decided, they decide, you decided you wanted an event management contract. And the bartending service, you know, bid on that and won that because they already had the bartending service contract, which ran through 20. So the answer is difficult to answer. And unfortunately, with the procurement laws in Massachusetts, nothing is ever clear, you know, on how you go about doing this.
Agreed. I think it's to Joe's, I think it was Joe's point earlier, though, like if somebody won this one specifically for management, but then we said, oh, we can also now negotiate catering in bar after the fact. I mean, if I was another company that didn't bid because they weren't on there, I'd be like, hey, wait, I would have bid on that if I knew that was coming.
But we are, we already have preferred, preferred caterers already signed. I don't know what the difference would be. That's what the park commission did. They had a contract and they had the caterer and said, okay, I want to do business with you guys. They drew up the contract, didn't go out to bid, just drew up the contract and said that everybody is going to pay the same percentage. There's not going to be any difference in the percentage at all between caterer one through five.
No, that's fine. I'm just speaking specifically to this RFP, that's all. The idea of expanding the scope after the fact for the winner is where
However, the winner could be. And based upon what we've already thought the park commission has already done, we could make them a preferred vendor.
Plus, it was sent to three like size and capability people. It wasn't like we sent it to, you know, one person who was just a one-person operation, let's say. All three are similar in size, similar in offering, similar in, you know, licensing. There's a lot of work that, you know, and I, I know this is complicated, but, you know, we followed all the procurement laws, which makes it just so much more. I mean, we know that from trying to get bids on having the fields seeded last year. So, you know, it's I, I, I would just ask that, you know, a little bit of trust comes our way for spending hours on the phone with the legal folks and the procurement and everything else and just see what we get on the 18th and then we can make a decision from there. The park commission says, you know, forget it, we don't want to do this at all, then I'm at the point where I'm like, okay, so you guys can put something together, but we just have to make sure it's legal procurement. That's all. We still have Nate Darling on the line with us?
Yep, he's on the line.
I mean, can we talk with Nate, whatever we have to talk with him, so that at least he can go and not still be here?
That's the next on the agenda, isn't it?
It is. So I think we need to try to clarify and, you know, discuss, you know, responsibilities again. So everybody is clear on who's doing what and from all the indications that I've heard from the park commission is that, you know, Franklin and the DPW department is doing a terrific job. And everybody seems to be happy, you know, with that. And if they're, they're not, you know, if you don't want to say anything, no, that's fine. But I think that they've really done a good job. And as you know, you know, we, the Blake who's over there, you know, full time, you know, is the the laborer or whatever, you know, seems to be doing well, doing, doing a good job as well. Unfortunately, you know, the, the park maintenance supervisor, we have tried and tried and tried. And we can't even get any resumes of people to apply. People right now just don't want to. I don't want to say work, but they just not looking for an employment, you know, and this, this job is, you know, 50s, you know, it's a pretty good, pretty good wage and we have excellent benefits and so forth. But the few people that did apply, you know, Franklin is very picky, you know, and who he hires and we just can't get anybody to hire. So we do have it, we have it budgeted in this year that we're in and we're going to be budgeting it in fiscal 22's budget, you know, as well, along with the the current labor, as you know. So some of the things that Franklin, you know, I, I, I thought he was going to be on, he said he was going to jump on, but maybe he decided not to. That, you know, he, he wanted to just make sure that we all understand that, you know, quote unquote, he's responsible for all the infrastructure, you know, at all these properties. And we got to talk about Claypool one in a minute. But so if anything has to do with the infrastructure of the park, you know, something you want to have done or whatever, you know, please bring it to Franklin's attention. So he's aware of it. And so he can figure that is this the right thing to do? Is there something that's going to cost some money, you know, to do it? And most important is the maintenance part of it, you know, what is it going to cost to maintain? And I think overall with the projects that we've worked together on, including the parking lots and some of the things, I think that everything seemed to go very, very well. And I know you guys are happy as we are happy with those parking lots finally to get those done. So some of the things that I'm talking about the, the different parks, I know that, you know, John Pons, you know, the highway department is really always maintained and cut the grass, you know, over there and they've been doing that for years. And a couple of things that are important that, you know, needs to be addressed and we're not going to be able to do everything this year. I don't have to tell you that, you know, right now, I, I, we, I gave you a copy of your year-to-date budget and with the quote unquote, $40,000 or thereabouts of the the SEM contract, you guys are in a hole. So that's a problem. And you only have $53,000 left, you know, in retained earnings. And as you know, the town subsidized provided $50,000 to try, try to keep everything together and try to keep the staffing together as well. So if you look at something like the John Pons Park, you know, and I know that Joe has put together a list of things that he would like to, you know, accomplish. And I know that some of those things have already been addressed. And one of the big ones is still outstanding is that famous building there, the 50-year-old building that's standing there. And, you know, I know Nate and Joe and Franklin, you know, have looked at that and they think there's a way to save part of the bottom part of that building. So I think that that's a project that, you know, should be looked at, you know, before it deteriorates faster. So that's something that should be considered. But outside of that, right now, you know, I mean, I know that, you know, Joe was talking about the fields, talking about parking lot, you know, I don't think that any of that's going to happen right now in the short term. So but I think that I think the, the place is pretty well maintained. I know that we've done some little construction, some electrical work and stuff like that. So going on to the Ted Williams. And as you know, I, I think, you know, I feel like he's doing a good job and he's got a lot of work to do and he continues to do work in addressing some of the maintenance items that need to be addressed. But from a, a capital, you know, standpoint, there's one issue that we absolutely have to address and that has to do with the haunted house. Police chief, fire chief, Franklin, building inspector, we all say it's got to come down. So, and it's got to come down now because it's so dangerous. You know, as we all know, we have kids going in there and, and so forth and so on, and somebody's going to get hurt. So our proposal would be to provide the funding to tear that building down, which could be $50,000, you know, to do that because you got to go in there and, you know, it's a whole building with asbestos in there and so forth and so on. So other than that, you know, besides the normal maintenance stuff that Franklin is, is doing, that's probably the best we're going to do, you know, this year. And I know that Mike wants to see us to try to do something about the lacrosse fields and getting those up and running, but just not going to be money available to do that right now. So I'm going to see how you're going to do that. So then the third area, you know, has, the third one has to do with Claypool Park. Right now, you know, coincidentally, Franklin was out there with his crew today, working there, cutting trees and stumps and stuff like that. So he's committed, you know, to doing that, but we really hadn't decided whether, you know, you wanted to take the responsibility of the maintenance, you know, of that facility, the infrastructure of that facility. We're not talking about buildings here now. Okay, we're just talking about the outside stuff. What he would like to request is that I know that, you know, during the summer, you hire a combination of lifeguards and maintenance high school kids or whatever. And he would like to instead hire two part-time seasonal workers like he does with the other areas in town and and cut back on the amount of maintenance people, not the lifeguards, the maintenance people there. So he would like, he's going to put together a proposal about that and then you can discuss it, you know, as a group. Now, there's a lot of work that needs to be done at Claypool, okay? A lot of work. And so we got to, we got to discuss what the priorities are. You know, there, I mean, whether it's buildings, taking down buildings or renovating stuff or whatever, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. So I don't know if you guys have prioritized what your expectations are that need to be done at Claypool. Anyways, so that's, that's about it, I think. Okay, so does everybody agree to that approach? Brian?
Open question for parks, it sounds like you've got a list of projects that they're hoping to do, is that something they could share with the rest of us, just so that we could see what's on there for now into the future?
Yeah. We have provided Franklin with our wishlist. I mean, you know, I know, we know we can't get to everything, but, you know, we came up with a, a list of things for John Pond, Clear Pond and Ted Williams camp. I don't know if Mike has a copy of it or if he gave it all to Franklin, but I know we've been funneling everything through Mike. To Franklin, so we only have one, one commissioner banging on his door and not all, all five of us.
That's, that's fine, I was curious.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'd have to pose that to Mike.
Yeah, Brian, I can send that to you, not a problem, just a list.
He sent it to all of us. I, I know, I know we got Joe's, you know, I've seen Joe's, it might be updated, but I've seen Joe's. You know, there's, there's two parts to that, Scott, you know, there's the quote unquote maintenance part of it, you know. Cutting down trees, you know, cleaning the trails or, you know, whatever it happens to be, then there's the other part having to do with the building part, which is what Nate. You know, that's why I had Nate on the call here and, you know, he. So the, the commission knows, and I, I assume that you know, that any maintenance. That has been done to the Ted Williams camp and John Pond, you know, electrical work, you know, we just had a furnace problem down at Ted Williams camp that had to be. Fixed and so forth, the town is paying for that, you know, we got seven thousand dollars that we've already paid, you know, this year. So any of those building maintenance stuff, the town is paying for that. I, I assume you're aware of that, I just want to make sure that you are.
Yep.
Okay, so, so that, that, those are the two pieces, so if there's, if there's a problem with the building, what he's doing now is he's having Teddy manage those projects. Well, actually making sure that the project is done and whatever needs to be done, so. You need to send us something, we have forms that, you know, we've used and to try to document it so we can make sure that it gets prioritized, I mean, Joe, Joe had a couple of things. On his list down at John Pond with, you know, some electrical stuff and we said, Joe, we'll get to it when we get it, I think it's been done now, right, Joe?
No.
Oh, thank you, well, I'll follow up on that, find out why it hasn't been done. But, so. That's those two pieces. So the, the question on the haunted house, are we all in favor of tearing down that building?
I got a question, Rich, do we know definitively that it has to be torn down, it's, it's not salvageable, is that what I'm hearing, or is it salvageable?
Nate, do you want to come in on that, please?
Yeah, sure, it, it, it all depends on what the parks would use the building for, so we, we know the floor is compromised. Roof's compromised, there is asbestos, asbestos in the building, the haunted house folks, when they use it, they cut out a lot of color ties. Did some just interior kind of, I don't want to say thoughtless, but that's the only word that comes to mind. Some work inside that didn't, didn't help the structural integrity of the building whatsoever. So, you know, to bring that building up to usable space, I guess one would have to ask themselves. You know, what will the building be used for, or if it's less expensive to demo it and then come up with a plan, either do an exterior, like a garage or. You know, a maintenance type building so we can move the garage material out of what's now being used for the, the, the dojo there. That, that space in the center of the park shouldn't be a shared occupied space with the garage, so, you know, maybe it's a future thought to. Demo the current haunted house building, do a three bay or four bay garage there, so Franklin can store his equipment there. Franklin's been very successful with getting carport type metal structures relatively inexpensive, because. You know, we all talk about procurement and how distasteful that can be at times. These metal structures are, are outside of prevailing rate, they're built out, you know, offsite. The only prevailing rate part of, of, of the, the procurement on them is the actual set on site, so. They're prefabbed, brought to site, one day they're slapped up, so that's the only part you're paying prevailing rate for, I think the last couple of. Metal structures that Franklin got were like twenty-six, twenty-eight thousand dollars somewhere in there, so. You know, something that we'd be looking at usable for the parks might be fifty, so to Rich's point, you know, demo because of the asbestos abatement. Because of the prevailing rate and the groundwork that'll have to be done there, you're probably talking fifty thousand to demo and get rid of. The existing building, maybe another fifty, sixty thousand to get a new building up there that may better suit the parks need and that's. Kind of why Rich invited me tonight is, you know, the, you know, capital project season is, is, is. Right there in front of us and, you know, ideally we, we would be looking at a five-year plan. Whether it be the, you know, Ted Williams camp and, and looking at roofs that need to be fixed, rotten trim. You know, maintenance on boilers, what's the life expectancy, you know, of the existing boilers in there and come up with a, a five-year plan. Same thing goes to, you know, John Pond, we did look at the electrical, the electrical was a bit of an issue, I'm, I'm working with Kevin Thu on it. You need industrial grade disconnects in multiple industrial grade disconnects to do what was being proposed with an external. You know, type shut off at the, at John Pond Park. Right now, what they're doing is they're unlocking the concession stand and going in and shutting them off at the breaker. You know, so to make that so they don't have to access the concession stand, you're probably talking somewhere around eight hundred to a thousand dollars, so. We kind of put that on hold temporarily, just to kind of look at the cost and evaluate other options. As Rich mentioned, that building is in poor shape, there's holes, holes in the floor. Roof's fallen off on the whole rear section, concrete blocks that are for the foundation have all spalled motor joints. They're starting to become dislodged, mod has fallen out, they're getting offset, so, you know, the rear part of that building needs to be taken down. The, the main part might be able to be saved, but again, you know, to demo the rear part, you're probably talking maybe thirty thousand on that. To rehab that front section could be upwards of forty, fifty thousand, so. You know, this is something that I, I want to offer at least my services if we want to go around and look at the buildings. Come up with some preliminary numbers, a, a to-do list on the buildings themselves. Get them on this year's capital plan and, you know, maybe we can, you know, tackle one or two of the, the larger jobs, the more public safety related jobs. Get those done if we can get the money appropriated at town meeting and then go from there with a full five-year capital plan.
One thing I was just wondering about on the, on the haunted house, yeah, I was thinking, I know you mentioned the, the maintenance building and that, and that's fine. But I was wondering, what if we wanted to convert it like a, you know, maybe have, if John Miranda wanted to move his studio over there. And maybe somebody wanted to have like a dance studio on part of that building, could we have more than one business in there if they, you know, take it on and, and fix it up themselves? Rather than tearing it down, just, you know, it's for, for the kids, you know, dance studio for kids, you know, karate for the kids, it is a Ted Williams park. So I was thinking more like that, if we can make any small businesses in there that, that are geared towards kids, but just a thought, that's all.
Joe, you know, that's, that's a little bit out of my area of expertise, that goes back into the contract and the liability for the work that's been done. I know that, you know, my family's got a long history in the town of Lakeville and what I see now with, you know, liabilities and procurement. It's not like it used to be and I, I, you know, Scott could certainly speak to that where, you know, years ago, you'd get a bunch of volunteers and you'd do a ton of work and it would all be great and. You know, town would save a lot of money, but, but now there's so much liability in that and when you offer those type of things and. You know, John Miranda himself had, had mentioned that to me in the past, if he could get a group of folks to go in there and volunteer some time and. You know, rehabs, you know, the building that he's in, if, if we were to create other garage space, we're just going to be cautious with that sometime, you know, a little money saved now. Ends up costing us long-term, it's a good point, I mean, I'd be happy to go in there with you, Joe, and show you there's a. You know, the center part, there used to be the, you know, the, the, the bathing type areas, the cement slab all pitched down to a center drain. And then the wings, three, three of the four wings are set up with wood floors and, you know, the electrical room, for example, it's just been. You know, layers of plywood added to it because the floor is completely rotten, now you can go in there and you probably have a two to three inch deflection on the floors, which is. You know, goes to tell you, there's, there's no framing left, it's just a clear span from sill to the nearest support post, it's, it's really, really bad. So to, you know, to ever get in there and start a remodel, if you were going to do that kind of extensive repair, you'd be dealing with asbestos abatement anyway, so. You know, the town would have to do an asbestos survey, we'd have to abate the asbestos, we'd have to come up with a structural design because of the size of the building, it would need to be engineered. So an engineer would have to go out, evaluate a fix and then implement that fix and, and you'd have to have a licensed, an unrestricted licensed construction supervisor. Doing the jobs and now you're right back into procurement and something that we're apt to be paying seventy, eighty dollars an hour for contractors to go in there and do the work. So, so, you know, to be honest with you, it's, it's one of those things that I think, and I, you know, I have a great deal of respect for the parks and. How you guys know you need to operate, I think it's a, a question for yourselves to say, what would we want to see there? You know, would we want to utilize the center of the parks to be our focal point and maybe that would be where your, you know, your leases or business location might be. And then try to get your, you know, maintenance type equipment out, out of, you know, the public view. Not to change subjects, but we're also looking at a townwide security platform with cameras and stuff, because that's a question that would always come up, so. You throw all of your equipment out in the, you know, where it's not right in plain sight, well, we'd have to get, you know, video surveillance equipment and hopefully be monitored by the police department. Just fortunate, pretty close response time there, so, you know, again, not to belabor the conversation, but if the parks. Saw a need of that, you know, of that space, I think that we should evaluate that and come up with some, some costs associated with creating usable space there. To, you know, as we move forward. The, the other thing, and again, as we, I'm talking, I'm thinking of the stuff that, so, so the haunted house, as you guys all know, you're in natural heritage, so. You saw the rigamarole that we ran through with the police station, they basically held the town hostage for, you know, in-kind land to protect in perpetuity. You know, right now you have improved property, so if you take that improved property, it would be exempt from natural heritage. So I don't think that you'd want to, you know, clear that land and then let it naturalize. Because then you'd be jumping through hoops about the time you ever wanted to do something, we ought to clear it out. We know that all kinds of hardware is nailed to the trees, clear out whatever we got to clear, make a pad-ready site and then, you know, maybe do that this year if we can. And maybe in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, we come up with a plan to do a garage type structure there, that would be my recommendation.
I agree with Nate, especially when you said asbestos removal. But I, I agree that that needs to come down, it would be, it would be nice to keep it as some sort of a historical building. Because it is the last building really that is from the original Ted Williams camp. But it is, it's just too bad in there, Joe, it's really, I mean, there's probably all kinds of mold in there too, isn't there, Nate?
Really compromised by infiltration of water, I'm, I'm certain, Mike, you're right, that there would be mold already growing in the wood. And, and the biggest thing is, you know, underneath it, where we know is all the rot, I mean, that's, that's going to be part of that mold issue too, so you, you're absolutely right.
The other, Joe, is what, just to address what you were talking about, making it into a dojo and maybe a dance studio or whatever. Is there's no parking over there? Parking lot, we just, we just built a new parking lot right in front of the, the karate studio, so. You'd have to deal with, you know, if you were going to do something like a business in there, you'd have to deal with a new parking lot.
Yeah, I, I understand, as I said, it's, it's, it's a shame, it's a historical building, I mean, I know I discussed with Paula not long ago, she mentioned maybe part of that. Could be like a Ted Williams, like a museum or whatever, you know, it is Ted Williams park. And it is a building that was been around for quite a long time, so if we could salvage some of it would be nice for something. Or maybe move part of it, whatever it is, but I just think it'd be nice to see if we could do anything with it. Yeah, you'd have to put a parking area and all that, but again, it'd be a long range, playing like Nate was saying. I said, just throwing out ideas, it's, it's a way that we can make some money for the park as well as keep it like civilian type, if you will, that's all, just a thought.
Okay, well, if we're going to. Tear down the building, we have to know soon, so we can put it in the capital plan. If you are looking at a renovation, then what needs to be done? Because the police department continues to have people going in there and they shouldn't be going in there. And it's a serious problem, and somebody's going to get hurt, especially with kids. So if we're not going to tear the building down, we got to make sure we try to secure it. Because right now it's not secure. So you can think about it for a couple of weeks, but.
No, I, I agree, when's our next meeting, Nellie?
We, we don't have one scheduled yet.
Not yet.
Think we need to make, address that at our next meeting.
All right, anybody else got anything they want to bring up, having to do with the capital items that are priority right now or? Any building issues that need to be addressed that are not being addressed?
Mr. Jerry, I just wanted to ask the parks, as they look at what they'd like to do, you mentioned lacrosse fields earlier, is there anything that those fields. Need us to do anyways, just so that we don't kind of go backwards on them this year, even if they're not used?
Well, the plan is to continue to mow them and fertilize them, that's all in our regular budget. The, the problem right now is everything is done, they're ready to be played on, except there's no parking lot. There's just a bunch of big, large stones out there, spread out to, to make like a base for the parking lot. In our budget to complete that. But with the COVID and no income coming in, we've been told, as, as Rich just said, we're not going to be able to do that. I was thinking about possibly contacting some local contractors and seeing if we could get some, some work donated perhaps. But we would still have to buy the material.
I guess where, the root of my question was just to make sure there was, there was nothing on the field's construction while it was left to do that would cause them to erode or go backwards if we didn't take care of them this year. So it sounds like the, the playing surfaces themselves are in maintenance mode.
Right, correct, well done, it's complete.
Nice, okay.
Anything else, or?
I have a question, I don't know if you can answer it or not, as far as the, what a, what a enterprise fund is. We had, we have a budget that was voted on and approved and I realize that everything is tight for everybody, but. Like are all, are we asking all of the town departments, like the, you know, the. The dump and everything else, are they all being asked to cut way back from their budgets?
Nobody's asking anybody to cut back on their budgets, what we're asking to do is that there's only so many limited resources. To do the capital projects, I mean, if we're going to do two or three things for the, the park commission, you know. We can't do everything this year, it's impossible, because the situation right now is, is that. You know, the, the Kears money and it's been extended, but not for revenue. And there's no plans to provide any revenue for the towns at this point.
When you say that, you mean lost revenue?
Yeah, well, lost revenue or additional revenue. So that means it's putting, put a squeeze on all of us to say that we can't come up with any additional revenue. And I could tell you off the top of my head right now that we got about a million dollars more to spend than last year. And if you just look at the schools alone, they're going to want sixty percent, seventy percent of that number. And then we got everything else, you know, as far as the town is concerned, so there's not tons of money, you know, available, we do have some free cash available. But, you know, some of that free cash has already been committed to capital projects that we already put together for coming for this, this year. And on top of that, we don't want to put ourselves into a position where we spend it all and then say, oh my God, you know, what are we going to do now, which. Like the concern that we had this year, you know, when we took fifty thousand dollars of that free cash and we gave it to the park commission. And their budget to try to. You know, we took fifty thousand dollars of that free cash and we gave it to the park commission and their budget to try to keep them, you know, together. So, um, that, that would be the concerning, you know, part of it. We're not asking anybody to cut their staff, as we didn't ask you to cut your staff, and we're still not gonna ask you to cut your staff. We just gotta be careful on what we're doing as far as capital is concerned. I had your question, Mike?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, I guess, I guess there's a few things that, uh, few additional things that, you know, we need to talk about, and it has to do with the budget, you know, coming up and, uh, um, you know, some of the things that, you know, looking at the, the revenue projections, um, assuming COVID nineteen goes away, that we start having weddings and things like that, you know, at the Loom Pond Lodge. Um, I would assume it would at least go back to the current number of revenue, which is roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, you know, generated, you know, for the park commission, you know, uh, budget. I think there's a few things that, uh, need to be talked about, and I know we've already talked about some of these. And that has to do with, um, the uses of our fields, um, uses of our facilities, let's say. That, you know, um, the question really is, you know, what do we wanna be? You know? Do we wanna just say, okay, anybody that shows up, we can allow them to use our fields? I'm not sure we wanna be in that business, because the amount of money that we're generating from some of those uses is really not offsetting the costs of maintaining the facilities and maintaining the fields. Now, I'm gonna discuss one that I know, um, having to do with pickleball. So pickleball is a perfect example. You know, that, you know, they came to the park commission, the park commission tried to do the right thing, you know, and charged them an X fee. All right? Um, they turn around and they don't follow the rules, you know? They were told, you know, not to use the senior center. Yet they continued to use the senior center, you know, and they told us, you know, told you guys that there was only gonna be, I don't know, twenty or thirty people playing, right? Well, uh, that didn't turn out to be the case, you know, at all. And so you have a situation there right now. If you go to their website, which I did, and you gotta take a look at it when you get a chance, Lakeville Pickleball. And they have seventy-two members, okay? Right on their website of who they are. And, and what's concerning me is, is that, um, even though you guys tried to enforce it, you know, didn't follow the rules at all. Then they get mad at us. They turn around, they hire a lawyer to sue the town. We had to pay legal fees, you know, to the lawyer to look at that and to have a conversation, you know, about that. And, uh, then I look and the, uh, if you go to the, uh, Lakeville, the Lakeville Athletic Club, Tennis Club, you know, they're playing indoor there, okay? They have an arrangement with them. They have six courts, you know, inside. And they're paying seven dollars a person per hour, per hour, seven dollars a person per hour. So if they can pay that, why are we charging them so much less than what they should be getting? But then the question becomes, how much do we want them to tie up those courts? We do have people in town that wanna play pickleball by themselves. We do have people that wanna play tennis by themselves. So, uh, and the other thing that I think, I, uh, I've looked at a number of sites, uh, City of Taunton is a good one to look at. You know, about what's allowed, what's not allowed, you know, in the city of Taunton. It's not allowed anybody to play on their fields that don't live in town, period. No, we have stands or butts. Not only that, they don't allow anybody that for profit, for, for a profit business, for-profit business, they don't allow any of that at all. So, you know, question is to ourselves, why are we doing it? You know, why do we wanna allow it, you know, to happen? And you guys gotta discuss that among yourselves. I think the perfect example recently was there was a guy from Fall River that wanted to start up the haunted house again here in Lakeville. Now, I believe, even though I think he was told that the park commission was not interested, you know, in pursuing that opportunity. He persistently harassed our office, the clerks in our office. And then finally, and, and Nate, Nate's on the phone, he can ver- verify that as well. So then he finally wound up in the selectmen's office. And, uh, so Tracy, I said, I heard Tracy talking to him. I said, Tracy, why don't you give me this guy so I can talk to him about this? So I did. So he says to me, well, Fall River won't let me do it anymore. I wanna come to Lakeville. I said, I don't think so. I don't, why would we do that? If Fall River isn't allowing me to do it, why would we do that? And then he says, I wanna hold a carnival, okay? I wanna do it in Lakeville. Now, this guy's making money, okay? It's not a nonprofit group, like our leagues and all those people, you know, that, that do things. Um, why do we want to do this? Why do we wanna continue doing this? It's like the triathlon. You know, I love the triathlon, three-day event in August, I think it's scheduled for this year. And we had this discussion a year ago, as a matter of fact. You know, we're charging them about five thousand dollars, you know, in revenue. They tie up the facilities for three days. You can have three weddings there in three days and make a lot more money, number one. Yet, he's bringing in two hundred and eighty thousand dollars with a thousand plus people. And we're getting five, five grand X, whatever that number is. Do you think that makes sense to us to do that? I'm not sure. But I'm not gonna tell you what to do. You guys need to discuss that, because this affects everything that you do. And so when people come forward and say, I wanna, and you ought to look at the rates of Taunton while you're at it. Um, you know, what they charge and, you know, and I would look to do Bedford, you know, as an example. The Bedford says, okay, you have to, first of all, Taunton says you gotta be a resident to play, all right, on the fields. Fall River, uh, uh, and the Bedford says seventy percent of the kids, I, I'm not, I'm not for this. Seventy percent of the kids must be resi- must be residents, you know, of the Bedford, of the Bedford too. Now, I know the leagues, the Freetown, Lakeville, and all those leagues, so a great thing. Those are for the kids, including the adults. But how far do we really wanna go? Is it worth the aggravation for us to do that? So that's my speech. You guys can say whatever you want. But I think, you know, during your, you gotta bury yourself, that you gotta do your, your budgets and, and, you know, and Ellie provided, Nellie, Nellie, you know, provided the information, you know, for the last two years, which you guys got a copy of, and it generated twenty-four thousand dollars. And I would say ninety percent of that was from our local, you know, organizations, which is great, you know? But for another thousand bucks, is it worth it? I'm not sure. I think if we do, if we get this event management thing straightened out, and we do a better job, uh, managing that, I think we'll all be better off and we'll make more money that way. Now, my other one is, you know, Clay Pond. And I brought this up, you know, before. That if you look at Clay Pond, you say to Clay Pond, and you know as well as I do, maintenance problems there, there's people problems there, not our staff, people problems there, you know, it's overcrowded in certain, you know, circumstances. Why isn't this just for the town of Lakeville? And so if your answer is, it's funding, then let's talk about the funding. But, you know, I know that the discussion, I looked at Marion, you know, as an example. Residents only, you know, for Marion, uh, the beaches and Dartmouth, look at them all, Westport. You know, but what they do, they provide seasonal passes for their residents, but they also provide a guest pass to put from the household that the people live in, and they charge thirty-five dollars a year. And you can give that guest pass to your family or whatever it happens to be. So I think there's different options to look at it, but if we're gonna continue with Clay Pond, the way it is, you know, with that many people, and somebody will say, well, well, not enough Lakeville residents. Well, maybe Lakeville residents aren't going because there's too many people going there. So you guys need to have that discussion. I'm not gonna make any decisions for you. But I think you look at, need to look at those options. And that's all I gotta say, if anybody wants to say anything else.
Well, I'd like to say thanks for the vote of confidence there, Rich. Um, we're doing the best we can. We're going along with, uh, the way things have been. The, there's no way that the clip on park would have been open if it, if we had only opened it to, to, uh, residents of Lakeville. And we would love nothing better to open it just so Lakeville residents, but fiscally, we could not do it. Um, as far as the other things go.
Let's stop.
I'm, I'm, I'm not done.
Hello, well, can I answer a Clay Pond question?
I have a question. Okay, go ahead.
Clay Pond, put together a proposal so we can take a look at it to see what it is.
Okay, well, that was not, the, the previous board of selectmen were not gonna give us any money for that. It was period. It was not happening. So.
Have we given you a lot of money, Mike?
Let's do it. Let's do it. As far as, as far as the rest of the, the parks go, we always take, give preference to all of the Lakeville residents.
I never, I never said you did, didn't.
Okay, the pickleball situation was a nightmare. And you, you're preaching to the choir when you talk to us about that. We've been trying for two years, three years now to get them to, to, to get in line. As far as this guy Jason Soares, who's bothering you from about the Lakeville Haunted House, we never, ever told him that he could open up the Lakeville Haunted House. He's, I'm sorry that he's bothering the town, but he's bothering us too.
Well, he, he called Nate and Nate could verify it. He said that, you know, he was told to call Nate. I'm just telling you what he said, okay? And Nate, you know, to ask Nate what needed to be done. And Nate says, I'm not wasting my time. The park commission hasn't even decided what they wanted to do. It was his understanding that was not gonna be done.
Nobody, nobody was gonna call town hall.
So we need to communicate better than to say, okay, guess what? We don't want haunted house anymore, okay? Period. So we're gonna, we can eliminate all these calls and discussions about it, cause Nate doesn't have time to go evaluate and say, what do we need to do to make that, to, to do that? That includes the police, that includes the fire, and, you know, fire chiefs and, and so forth. It's a lot of work to do that, Mike.
No kidding. I mean, we didn't tell him to call the town hall.
Okay.
We didn't tell him that he could, he could do anything. I mean, I, there's nobody, I've been working over there for months cleaning that place up. We've had fifteen dumpster, fifteen dumpsters taken out of there so far. I still probably have another fifteen to go. Uh, which we have, it stopped because we have no money for it. Um, I, I, you know, we're, we're aware of the situation of the Lakeville Haunted House. And trust me, Scott was just over there last weekend trying to board up the back door because somebody broke in there again.
That's correct.
That's why I said, let's address it at our last meeting, and next meeting.
Anyways, that's all I have to say. If anybody else wants to say anything else.
Well, just to add some to the whole concept of the enterprise fund. So the enterprise fund allows for, um, whatever it is, the landfill, or in this case, the parks, to charge user fees to try to, you know, make, make your budget from that. I have no idea why the town decided to, I, to go to make it. I, I don't remember that far back, but it's been a while since it's been an enterprise fund. Um, and that definitely puts the burden on the park commissioners to come up with revenue. So I can see why every, you guys look at everything, cause you're looking at everything to try to, you know, say, okay, we need to come up with this budget money. We're not getting, you know, a budget from the town like the rest of, you know, the rest of the town departments, okay? So a lot of other town departments, they also generate revenue, but they get, you know, revenue from taxation, the, the park, because, and, and this is true for the, um, for the landfill as well, because you can generate fees. If, again, I don't know why it's before my time. I, I don't even remember if I voted on it or not. Um, making the, um, park commission an enterprise fund. But that being said, that's what you are. So I absolutely appreciate all the work that everybody puts in to try to rent the fields, to try to, um, you know, talk to anyone who wants to come in and try to do an event. But I think at this point though, because again, this is like a major crossroads. We're, we've seen what the problem is when a big emergency happens. It's, it's completely demolished the budget of the parks. I think it's a good time to, for the park commissioners to sit and say, and give it some thought and say, what do we want here? What do we want to be? Do we want to promote our park for, you know, residential use? I mean, as soon as people couldn't go anywhere, they came right to nature. I mean, we had to dismantle the basketball courts, cause the kids were trying, you know, to get there. So it's people still wanna go out and be in nature when they can't do anything else. I mean, everyone was busy. They don't always get to in the wintertime. It's not as, but all summer long, we were trying to kick kids out of there. It was their first instinct to go be in nature. It, you know, we have to decide whether that's what we want the parks to be. Or if we wanna rent it to every single person that comes along, you know, whether they're nonprofit or for-profit, or, I, I mean, it's just, I think there needs to be a long-term plan. And a, a few years ago, the long-term plan was let's renovate the house and let's get into the entertainment business so we can pay off the renovations and, you know, do a lot of positive work in that way. But I think right now, we need to come up with, or the park commissioners need to come up with a plan, what they see, what is the vision for the parks? Do we want the parks to be mostly for just Lakeville residents? Do we want them to be? Uh, do we wanna be a, you know, an athletic, pick a sport, whichever one, Mecca for the South Shore and, and like establish goals to get there. We need some short-term planning. I mean, it's a beautiful property. I say it hundreds and hundreds of times. It's a beautiful property. I, I think it's got so much going for us, but I think we just need to, you know, I, I think we need to, like, get some direction here. If you, if you want to remain the kind of organization that rents the fields to, you know, horseshoes and pickleball and whatever, then maybe we need a more formal structure in place to go over the fees to make sure the park is getting, you know, paid adequately for what, you know, what, but they, what there should be. So I, I don't think it's, I don't, I'd like to see my kid be able to go down there and have a pickup volleyball game on a Sunday afternoon. I mean, uh, you know, in the summer, it, it, what, what is the vision for the parks? Cause we have some really nice parks. So I, I think that's what we're, that's what I'm asking anyways. I, I'm just asking for some direction.
Uh, just to add one point, Leah, if they wanna go down there and play volleyball on a Saturday or Sunday, they do it now. They have pickup games Saturdays and Sundays all the time.
Yeah, but, right, but as opposed Scott to, if we're, if we're gonna say it's gonna be a for-profit enterprise for the town and we're gonna rent the fields out twenty-four, seven, fifty-two weeks of the year, then basically residents may say, I'd rather see my taxation dollars go towards it instead of them trying to be an enterprise fund. I, I guess that's, you know, that's, that's what I'm asking. We really need to answer, you know, these hard questions. And I, I admit they're hard questions, but don't forget, Lakeville's a lot bigger than it was, you know, um, than it was even just a few years ago. There's a lot of young people here. I mean, maybe the mission statement sort of needs to accommodate that. We have a whole bunch of people who love the environment right now that are living in this town. You, you know, maybe, maybe this is the time to evaluate what we want it, what we want it to be, instead of just trying to do whatever we can to get by, you know, so.
I, I mean, I, I will say, you know, um, thank you to the board of selectmen for helping us along, giving us some money. Um, you know, being willing to talk to us, uh, uh, about like what Rich just said. Maybe we can work out some plan with funding Claire Pond. That would be absolutely fantastic. And I don't think any member of the, our board would object to it. You've just gotta understand that this is a whole new avenue from where we've been for the last six years. We've been flat-out told. We've been flat out told that you're not getting a dime, period, don't ask for it. Now, now, it's, it's, the culture is changing, and that's great. And we're willing to change, you know, we just, we got to make a plan, yes. But we also couldn't make this plan without hearing what I'm hearing tonight from you, from Rich, from Brian. That, you know, you're willing to help us and put money into Claire Pond or Ted Williams, which is absolutely fantastic. And I'm thrilled to hear it. Because I'm tired of banging my head against the wall trying to fund the budget. You know, and, and, and that's where, you know, we see a field open that's not being used, and somebody wants to come down and practice, and they may have two kids from Lakeville and three kids from Taunton. And we get a chance to make an extra five hundred dollars on a field that's not being used, that we can take and put back into the park. That's where we've added these, these, these groups, some of these out-of-town groups. Um, some of these, uh, um, you know, uh, baseball teams, and we charge them double. You know, we, we don't charge them the, the, the rates that we do for Freetown-Lakeville soccer or from Freetown-Lakeville baseball or, or, or any of these groups. I mean, they get hit with a twenty-dollar fee, you know, that's, that's what they're getting charged. Where the other ones are getting hit with forty or fifty dollars a player, um, to practice or come down and play one doubleheader a week. Um, so it's great to hear that you want to work with us and you want to help us. We can come up with another plan, we can come up with alternative plans. And believe me, I would be the first one, and, and I know Mike's already said it, to say, Lakeville residents only at Claire Pond, that's how I grew up. The only way you could get in there was to be a guest. I think it would be fantastic to be able to do that. But the park was fully funded at that time, too.
Right, right.
You know, so I mean, you know, but to hear you guys say that you're willing to work with us and help us. I, 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 you know, I'm jumping up and down in my chair over here, I may not look like it, but, you know, really, I, it's fantastic to hear. And I, I, you know, I'm going to speak for the rest of the board when I say, I, I, I don't think that any one of them would, would, would say no to, you know, clamoring it down and, and, and maybe not having some of these out-of-town groups. I, I, I'm all for it, it'd be easier for me, one, one less thing I got to worry about.
Well, you know, I, I have, I've seen all of you out there and, you know, I, I know you go by there in the morning on your way to work, Scott. Sometimes at lunch, and I know you guys are putting the time in, but I, I just feel like we need a direction that we can all sort of go, I feel like we're floundering, trying to get it done. I, I, I just think that, you know, as a park commission, if you guys could sort of come up with like a, you know, an immediate one-year plan, a three-year plan, a five-year plan, and you know what? If that plan is done, you know, and voted on and whatever, then whoever your next board of selectmen is. You know, it, it gives your plan merit because it was done like, you know, the, the proper way, you know what I mean? So you always can say something like, listen, we were tasked with this, and even though those selectmen are gone. You know, this is all on public record, you know, that we were gonna, you know, come up with a mission for the parks. I just think it's the right time right now.
And if I may, um, I've been listening and trying to think of how I wanted to say this. I mean, I'm on board with, as a resident. I want to know that my parks are always there, ready to be used, safe, you know, look great. Part of the reason why we moved to town. As a selectman, I'd like to help figure out how we can do that, and, you know, maybe, maybe it's worth a sit-down with the town accountant to say, is, is enterprise fund the correct thing? Do we, is there a mechanism where enterprise fund is more limited to, you know, the event revenue that comes in? And maybe that event revenue, I'm just going to shoot from the hip here, and someone can tell me it's impossible later. But, you know, you know, maybe that revenue coming in turns into, you know, we fund via taxation, keeping the parks looking great. But then that revenue that comes in, maybe that's where the capital money for parks come from. Or maybe a percentage, a percentage of that revenue is put aside for open space, because guess what? We don't have anything for open space right now, I mean, there's a potential partnership. Uh, but absolutely, I mean, I think you guys probably spend most of your time just figuring out where are we going to find the next dollar to keep services as is? And you aren't allowed to have that vision of where we want to take the place. I think a lot of the things that have, you know, happened in the past were done with well intentions, and some of them worked out, some of them didn't. Fine, we learn from, we move on. Um, so yeah, I would love to see ideas, maybe a chat with the, you know, town accountant to see what are, what are the other options we haven't considered yet? And, and figure out how, how can we make sure that you guys have parks to commission over that you're proud of, and where do we go next? So totally open ideas, whatever those might be. It, it's a tough time, we haven't seen anything like this before, I don't expect you to figure out how to do it with what you're, what's in front of you right now. But under normal circumstances, what could we do?
Well, Scott, is there something else?
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I guess the only thing is that, you know, we're in budget season, as you know. So, uh, we need to try to get our hands around this, you know, by the end of the month. You know, to see, you know, what the options are, where we should go, what we need to do in the short term and long term. Um, um, if you want to talk about undoing the enterprise, Brian, we really can't do it right now till we get all these pieces. You know, all together, you know, to figure out, you know, where we're going and so forth, so. Um, but I think, you know.
At least part of the interruption, we should at least have the conversation to figure out what would it take?
That's fine.
Maybe it's over twelve months, twenty-four months, whatever it might be.
Well, actually, that would be, it'd have to be over two years, but that's, that's for another discussion. But, um, you know, as far as, you know, um, like I said, you know, I think we try, we, I think we, I think you guys agree with us, you know. We stepped up pretty good this year, giving you additional funding and so forth and so on, and, you know. What that is this year, I don't think any of us can answer that right now. But I can tell you, in my opinion, and I think it's all the two board members, we want to improve things. And we don't want you to do it by yourself, okay? I, I'm almost positive the other two board members are agreed about that. So we need to figure that out, now maybe we have a little, can't do as much as we thought in the short term for next year. But, you know, like we said, if we get the, some of these plans in place, you know, we can do it. And, um, I do think, you know, just, just so you guys know, I mean, we do subsidize part of the transfer station from taxation, I don't know if you know that.
Yeah, you, quite a bit.
Okay, yeah, well, it'd be creeping up every year, Scott, I don't know why.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying.
It keeps coming up, and I don't have a problem doing that, you know, if we do some, I don't, I'm throwing a number, I have no idea what that number, let's say fifty thousand dollars. You know, to deal with Claire Pond and something else or whatever. I don't have a problem supporting that, as long as we can fit it all in in our structure here, right now, but COVID-nineteen is, you know, kind of put us over the edge a little bit. Um, but I'm for that, I'm no, I have no problem saying, okay, fifty this year, fifty next year. Until we get to the point where, you know, the, like Brian says, the money coming in from the, um, uh, the, uh, the events, you know, maybe that's our capital items, I don't know. But, you know, let's give it a try, and let's see if we can work something out between us. And I think something can be done, I think something can be done here in the short term, and then we'll take it from there. So get going, guys.
Okay.
Any else, anybody else wants to bring up? Scott, you all set?
I, I, I don't have anything, uh, Mike, do you have anything you'd like to add? Uh, Jesse?
I'm good.
Joe?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank, thank the board of selectmen, I, I get some good discussion here. Um, I think we, you know, we agree, you know, now that we've got a little latitude here with the assistance of the board of selectmen, I think if we can do more, like Scott was saying. Um, we all, I think we all have the same goal, we want to make the parks as best we can for the town, that's, that's a given. How we get there, I think we have to see, but I think that's, that's the goal that we all want. Uh, we'll do whatever we can, uh, to get, to get to that point, so. I, I said, appreciate the input from you guys and, uh, hopefully we can continue to work together and get, uh, get, get to where we want to get to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll just, I'm just reaching out if Paula's still here. No.
She's still on, I can see.
She's on, but she, she, she can't, can't talk to us, okay. All right, I just figured I'd give her a chance.
Okay. Okay, Nellie, you got all this now? You got everything?
It's chapters.
It does, Nellie. Now, Nellie, it doesn't have to be word by word, just some of the things we're going to do, that's all.
You guys are forcing me for stenography, you're forcing me to learn.
All right, uh, okay, anybody, uh, Brian or Leah?
I'm good.
I'm good, thank you, everybody, for your patience.
So long, but it was worth the meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Scott, you make a motion to, somebody make a motion to adjourn for the park commission?
I, I will, uh, is it, before I do that, though, I'd like to see if the parks, we can schedule another night for our, another meeting. Parks members, Joe, do you have a, Nellie?
You know, maybe sooner or later, maybe go next Monday, um, the two guys, or the eighteenth.
Well, do we want to do, uh, next Monday? Because we were all talking about perhaps a slight meeting on the nineteenth, once all the, um, RFQs come back?
That doesn't have to be a full meeting, does it, Rich?
No.
That can just be like Leah said, the two-member liaison, I guess you'd call it, or whatever you want to.
Whatever you want to do.
Okay. So they could, they could meet and then get back to the board the following week, so if we go next week, Nellie? Jesse?
On the, on the eleventh?
Jesse's at work for you?
It works.
Mike?
Good for me.
Okay. Um, Paula, I'd ask you, but I, I don't hear anything from you, so hopefully you can hear me when I say we'll try to go for the eleventh at six-thirty.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to make a, a, entertain a motion to, um, adjourn the parks commission at eight-fifty-six.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, Jesse?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Paula? Good try, and Scott, I, I, I also, um, were adjourned at eight-fifty-six. Thank you very much.
Entertainer motion to adjourn from the board of selectmen.
I'm moved.
Second motion.
Um, all those in favor, Leah?
Maybe, and I.
Yeah, I agree.
The camera, I.
Okay. Well, thank you to Nate Darling, too.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Nate, for being on.